Let's all rise for the pledge, please. Pledge of reasons to defy United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on your own, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
Commissioner Workman, would you please lead us in prayer to start?
Certainly, if you would, not with me, please. Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, we thank you for all of your many blessings. We thank you for the sunshine that we're enjoying. We thank you for the rain. We thank you for all those things that you do for us each and every day, those things that we realize and those things that we don't. Heavenly Father, we ask that you would bless those that have come before us here today, be with us as we make decisions that affect our county's citizens and give us that wisdom, guidance, and direction to move our county forward. Dear Lord, we pray for our state and its leaders. Help them as they make decisions that affect us all. And for our nation, dear Lord, we pray that those that lead us would be, again, cognizant of our needs and wishes. We thank you, dear Lord, for all that you do for us each and every day. And as we depart from our meeting here today, grant us traveling mercies as we return to our homes and abodes. Now go with us through the rest of this meeting today and whatever's accomplished. We hope that you would be praised, honored, and glorified by what occurs. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes from our May 20 regularly scheduled meeting. We can dispense with the reading if everyone approves of that, and we will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Oh, thank you, Lord.
Motion been properly moved and seconded for approval of the minutes from May 20. Any discussion? Here you now proceed to vote. All is in favor, please say the same.
Aha.
That motion is passed and those minutes are approved. First, second item on the agenda is Paul Lewis, our OEM 911 Director for Updates.
Got a bunch of stuff today. Back to circuit. Yeah, let's see. I've got one for you someplace. Paul Lewis, Director of Officer Emergency Management, 911 Dispatch, muffled for the month of May. Under 911, the State Siren Group has been installing the Motorola equipment up on the Lost City Tower. There's a little bit of hang up, some of the pieces, I guess that Motorola sent in were not the correct pieces, so they had to make sure they reordered those. So that's the only holdup right now on it. The antennas and everything's been put in by Premier Construction, so once other parts come in, that tower should be finished and operational. T-Mobile proposal they had to service to the Helmet Rock, that's still pending. They are still reviewing the documents because they have to make sure that that tower will hold the additional equipment that's going on that tower. They said that they thought that the footings on that tower, that they were not putting in according to the way the specs were supposed to be. They are not as wide as they were supposed to be, but when I talked to Larry Kirchner about it, he seemed to think that they'd hit solid rock and they made some adjustments. But I have no as-bills on that tower as far as the footings go on that. So they're reviewing that and their engineers are looking at that. So as soon as they get that squared away, then they'll probably be putting their stuff on that tower. And I've talked to US Cellular about the Lost City Towers, and they were going to send that, the lady I talked to was going to send that to the engineering department, and I haven't heard back from her, so I'll try to make contact with her. And I've also talked to a couple of database companies to review the GIS information for the 911 mapping to make sure that those addresses and stuff are correct before I go into the core part of the next gen on that. Because I don't want to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars if they're not where they need to be. And the database companies are not that expensive, so I think what they do for the review and stuff on that. Under the call volume, we had 632 calls that came in. Law enforcement had the following, Department of Natural Resources had 10 calls. And I got one thing in there. Well, we do have currently, now I have on there that we didn't have an officer assigned to Hardy County, but they are assigning. One has been under training and been alt, and he's still in training, but he's going to be assigned to Hardy County. Hardy County Sheriff's Office had 269 calls. Moorefield Police Department, 158. State Police carried 44 calls. On the EMS side, I had West Hardy down for 124 calls. The HCEAA had 79 calls, and the Wardsville Rescue had 34 calls. Under the Fire Department, Cape Valley Fire had seven calls. Mathias Baker, 17, and the Moorefield Fire Department had 29 calls. And then we had 47 calls, which is really a lot of calls for Department of Highway Story in April, mostly from the rains and stuff or trees and stuff going across roads on that. Under the Office of Emergency Management and Grants, have not received any grant information for '25 outside of the one grant that they released with the SHA grant. I did receive a thing yesterday of note where the federal government had cut funding. Right now, I guess, pending, but under the State Home Run, Spirit to Grant, which is a GS GP grant, which is part of that good law enforcement, they took out $70 million from that and 17% cut. Firefighters, they did a 16% cut, $61 million. Under the EMPG, they did 15% cut for $55 million. And under the Non-Proper Grant, which is for churches and religious, mostly those type groups, they did a 29% cut for $110 million. So that's what they're looking at right now. They originally told us at a meeting not too long ago that they weren't even sure that we would have EMPG funding anymore, that it may be totally cut out on that. So we'll probably get more on that later. I've discussed with Melissa in the planning office about rain gauges. I think I mentioned that before, that I need to get with her and see where she thinks those rain gauges need to go. I think when we purchase any rain gauges, they're about $5,000, but the state will maintain and install those after they're put in. Under the 2023 EMPG money, that application has went to them, they've got all the information, but they have not released any of the money on that, which is approximately $24,000. And then under the 2024 LEPC grant, all the information has been sent to them for the budget and stuff. And the LEPC grant application for '25, '26, it just came in to be completed. I'll complete that after we meet today, the LEPC, to see what they would want to put in the budget, and that's going to be for $4,000. And the, like I said, the LEPC meets today at 12:30, Marshall Volunteer Fire Department. We have classes set up for the Project Lifesaver, and that class will be next week on June the 10th at the 911 Center on that. And I think JT has most of the people lined up to take that class. Now, it will be a training class for trainers. So anybody takes that class will be able to train additional people under that. Let's see. I did do an SHGP grant for the 911 Center, and it's for fiber security. Since there's been several 911 Centers recently that's been hacked in different states. So I'm applying for that, and if that grant comes through, GST will add additional equipment to the center to protect the stuff there, the files and stuff of the 911 Center. And then on my budget, I should be about $10,000 under budget. Any questions? That's on the OEM budget.
Paul, how many have you had sign up for the Project Lifesaver?
I think they only won about eight, and I think he's going to have a total of eight. Because they'll do some outside training, too, that they have to do out in the field.
Will you please stay, you know, communicate with us when you speak with Melissa? So we can maybe add on to the second agenda of the month, maybe a little more about that or maybe the first July meeting.
Okay.
Are them rain gauges made out of gold? $5,000 for a rain gauge?
It's the telemetry.
Yeah.
That, you know, ties them into.
State and federal are into the National Labor Service, too. It's cheap compared to some stuff.
That's great. I was never gonna. Are you, or is there any further discussion that you're hearing through the state regarding the proposed changes to FEMA?
Just on the grant, maybe.
I continue to wonder as I hear Boston News reports and knowing how important and how helpful in some cases, when we've lived and been through some of the disasters that we've been through, how, you know, FEMA helped us to expedite a lot of things once they got mobilized. And I just kind of wonder how all that's.
They're really tight on some of those because they're giving more money for public assistance than what they are for individual assistance. Individual assistance has the higher threshold in the state of Washington that has to be met, because some of them down in the southern part with some of the flooding they've had, the individuals didn't meet their parts, but they did on the public's part end of.
Yep. Here's something, Paul, just something for us possibly to be working on. I attended the West Virginia Association of Counties Board meeting over these last couple of days, just came back last evening, and something that new president, his name is Greg Vandal, out of Summers County, he's the successor there, that's the new WICO president. He is wanting counties to write up what we do, you know, just in all the offices that work at local county government, you know, different tasks, different things that county government does, and then to communicate that with our legislators, because we need to stay in constant communication with them, which I think is a good initiative. And I was talking with the Operations Director at the West Virginia Association of Counties, and something that we could write up is our response to the fires from last year. That would be a good, I think, because it explains on many different levels, you know, actions that were taken and why it was necessary, and it's important that our legislators hear that. So it's just something I think that's going to be, and we'll keep talking about it, but that would be, that would be something for us to work on. She specifically mentioned that.
Okay. And I am looking and we're discussing the LEPC about bringing in a training thing with the electric vehicles and the batteries and stuff to Hardy County. Because there's a lot of stuff out there on that, and with these solar farms and stuff going on, that's got the batteries and stuff, it's going to be no problem.
Right, right. Any further questions for Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is Mr. Roger Vikovsky for HCEAA Updates. Roger serves as the Operations Liaison Volunteer Position for the HCEAA, Hardy County Emergency Ambulance Authority.
Thank you again, Roger Vikovsky, representing the Hardy County Emergency Ambulance Authority Board. And as you mentioned, my role is Operations Liaison, which is a title we created to interface with each of the agencies. I've distributed a financial highlight, and I'll cover that in a minute. But I wanted to take this opportunity to just, just kind of overview. In January, the county commissioners had kind of tasked the Board of Directors, the ambulance authority, to bake in some financial accountability, that, you know, that there just wasn't the credibility for the operation that, that the citizens deserved, and asked us to, to take a more active role. So between then and now, we have transitioned our board from a more of a passive board, meeting once a month, to a very active board, actively managing the ambulance authority. We've, we've replaced our ineffective monthly meetings, which were just free-for-alls, with a much more formal, structured quarterly meeting set up where, you know, very formal set up, following, following our agenda point by point. It's really, two of the key, key components of that are agency reports with, with a formal, you know, overhead presentation and a formal structure, and committee reports. We, to be more active, we've, we've created a lot of committees and a lot of responsibilities for the board members with, with very specific tasks to take care of within, between our quarterly meetings. And we've created a planning committee, which is essentially a steering committee for, for the Board of Directors, an audit committee, which is actually required in our bylaws, a bylaws committee to, to kind of redo how we, how we do business, make it match our active approach. A levy exploratory committee, because, you know, ultimately, we're going to talk about some of the financial highlights, but ultimately, there needs to be an increase in funding, and that's, you know, that's kind of where all this ends up. And a finance committee, which specifically reviews Baker's expenses line item by line item. You know, that's, that's their role. So instead of, instead of burning up time at a meeting, going through, you know, what, what was this expense, what was that checked for, that committee's job is to, to review that on an ongoing basis. And some of the, some of the tasks that were, that are assigned to specific board members, you know, Tim Thorn is, is very familiar with medical billing, and he's, his responsibility is to, is to stay on top of the medical billing, billing that we can do, and look at ways to increase our revenue through that. Operations is, is my, my role, and that matches my background. Of course, we have a treasurer, president, and secretary, and Fran Welton has taken on outreach as, as her goal, which has an emphasis on training and certifications to try to increase, you know, the, our body of potential, potential health. Couple other work and, couple other projects that we're doing. I mentioned agency-specific meetings. So instead of our meeting monthly as a, as a board, we're, we're meeting, trying to meet monthly with each agency separately to address their specific concerns and, and questions, and it's, it's been very successful. You know, it opens up a line of communication that just didn't exist and gives us the ability to support their, their efforts. We're having an information summit on June 10th, where each of the agencies is going to be represented to try to standardize our KPIs, key, key performance indicators, standardize our financial reports, so that on a go-forward basis, our quarterly meetings, we even, you know, have a, have a cleaner way to present that information and track our trends in how, how we're doing. You know, West Hardy is, is planning an EMT classes for the, for the fall, so that's, you know, that's one step that's, that's going to help. You know, I personally would like to see us really increase certifying drivers and just have, just flood our county with certified drivers that are ready to go if we need additional help. And of course, short-term and long-term planning, which, you know, equipment replacement and capital expense is going to be a biggie, and that's, that's part of this year's planning responsibilities. You know, we've, we've updated our platform of, of managing it, you know, instead of everything just being kind of merged together, there is no one size that fits all for our agencies. So we've detangled the agencies, and, you know, so we have the Baker Agency, which we've, you know, we've focused Derek to be very specifically the general manager of that operation. And, and I'll tell you that in no small way has he been successful in, in controlling costs and really, really leaning into that, you know, more focused area of responsibility. West Hardy, you know, they have passionate leadership, and they've, they're successfully leveraging the, the population density that they have in Moorefield, so they have a different operating model than, than what we have in Baker. Baker, there's no, no density, there's, it's a, it's a paid agency, and that's the only way you're going to be able to be successful in that, in that rural with lack of population. And of course, Wardensville, you know, is their volunteer organization is fantastic. We need to bolster and support that in every way we can, which includes putting some of our paid people there to, to supplement where they're, they're lacking with their, with their volunteers. So it's, you know, it's, it's been, it's been a very active five months, and we're really trying to, as an active board now, trying to manage this into a place where our citizens are going to be more, be proud of what we, what we do. We want to prove that, that we can operate within a budget. And to that end, I, I had shared a couple of financial highlights. And, you know, specifically, I mean, you know, most of the money goes to the Baker operation, so I've got a couple of items there. First is a graph showing the wages per pay period. I know everybody was, had been very concerned that, that we weren't managing, managing the, the labor cost the way we, we should. And, and again, I want to comment that, that Derek, you know, we created a set of action items for him to go after, and he went after them with a vengeance, and it shows in that graph. From the time in January, we were almost $28,000 per period, per pay period for labor. And now you'll see that they were down around $21,000 on average per pay period. And I put a straight line in there of what our 2026 budget is for labor, and you can see we're, we're right there. So, you know, just a great result, a lot of, a lot of great management. Two other, a couple other numbers I added there. If you remember, when we created our budget for this year, we took the, the last six months of 2024, annualized that number and said, okay, that's, that's our current run rate. And then we made our action item reductions to that number. So our average monthly expense was $127,000 for, for the Baker operation. Since January, when we implemented these action items, we're, we're some $20,000 a month lower. So that, that number annualizes to $234,000 reduction year over year. And that's exactly where we budgeted, to be, be about 200 and some thousand lower. Now, you know, just to, just to be cautious, you know, a lot of things have gone right to accomplish this, and there's a long way to go. But, you know, but the preliminary, I wanted to share some good results, because, because they've really been working hard to do it. Couple other good, you know, good things to report. Wardensville, they did their fundraiser over the holiday, and they raised $13,500, which is phenomenal, and, you know, credit to their hard work. And that gives them breathing room, you know, on a go-forward basis to, to continue with what they do. West Hardy started the year in a negative, but they had, if you remember, they, they invested heavily in that building that they went into and made the changes and improvements they needed to, and they, they put some $20,000, I think, into that in January alone. So, but from February to April, every month, they've had a surplus, which is fantastic. And so they're still in a small deficit for the year, for the calendar year, but they're really doing a nice job. And I just wanted to point out that all three agencies have, you know, at our, at our request, has really been focused on their operating efficiencies. And it's a, you know, it's a fine line because you're providing a service, and you need to always be able to provide that service. So I guess the last thing I'd, I'd add is when, when we, when we all started this as a board in January, we were meeting with all the agencies, and the question that, that I raised was, can we tell the residents of our county, can we tell them that we're operating tight as a drum? Who, who here can say that? And nobody could. I can tell you with these, these results and the action plans that they've implemented at the end of this coming year, that they'll be able to say, we're operating tight as a drum.
That's an excellent report, Roger. Excellent, that's an excellent report, and I really appreciate you doing it. And I'll tell you, we need to step up some on what we're doing, because we should have a TV right here so people can see these reports. We should, we should start working on that, because we, we are getting reports, and the people there can't see it. But another thing we need to do is, can, can we put this on our county Facebook page?
Yeah, I can, I can send an email to you or something.
We need to have this on our county Facebook page. 100%. And whatever else, whatever other social media we use.
Yeah. That's one of the things with our quarterly meetings now, in a more formal approach, we're, you know, we're putting it up on the TV screen, so everybody's seeing the same thing.
Yeah, 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 and this was from, well, it was from a collaboration. You know, we knew we needed to change the format of the way the meeting, even the setup of the meeting, because it was disastrous. It was just asking for disaster to happen at every meeting. It's like you're on, you're, you're setting before a firing squad at every meeting. Who wants to serve on a board where that's the case? No one, no one would want to do that. And so we changed the setup, like the chair setup and the actual structure for these meetings, which allowed for a much better one. I wanted to ask you a question on that. You had created a form for them to use for reporting. You think, are they want to be able to use that, is each one going to be able to use that form from what you can tell?
Well, that's, that's the goal for our July quarterly meeting. The June 10th Info Summit, that's, that's one of these items, is to agree on that.
Okay, all right. So we, we will get this up, you know, so others can see it, because you're right, if you're talking, taking average monthly, monthly expenses from 127 to 107, that's a significant thing, you know, and.
It is, and, and the one thing that always, you know, comes back into my mind, and in budgets that we've seen, or at least annual reports and monthly reports that we've seen, you know, the cost of equipment has not been included. And so while these efficiencies are great, I, I see that that money, that the need for that money.
Future cost of equipment?
Yeah, being put back.
Well, and that's the story, that's the story we, we need to be telling, because it can't only be an ask coming from constituents, well, save money, save money. Well, we have to continue this, it has to have sustainability, and that requires funding for these things.
You know, in the six, just over six years that I've been on the commission, when we, when I first came on the commission, we were talking about new ambulances, it cost $250,000. That costs $400,000 just six plus years later. $400,000, from $250,000 to over $400,000 for the same ambulance.
Yeah.
And, and, and those costs, replacement costs are going to be higher.
And that, and that's this fiscal year's, one of the tasks, is to put together a capital plan. Because everybody's got aging, equipment aging out, the life packs, those, those aren't even being supported anymore and those kinds of things.
These are excellent steps in the right direction.
It's steps in the right direction, most certainly.
I got a question and a comment. Do these employees have PIA?
Yeah.
I would suggest that you let the general public know what's happening in that world, because I, in my health department.
It's a huge increase, it's going, there's, there's, there's a lot of challenges.
$15,000 is going up this year. And I have five employees. The health department's share is going up to $14,000. It's going up $14,000, and employee share is going up like 2,800, because we do 80/20.
Right.
The, your general public's not going to know that if they don't have PIA, so that there is just going to show a cost increase, so just make, make them aware.
Everything's going up.
Nothing's going down.
Exactly.
Yeah. Other, something else I wanted to mention, on the training, I shared Jamie Weller's contact information with you, because I think that some of the things that Fran is setting up, we should talk to him, I think. I sent an email out to her to let her know that, but it would just be good. He's, he's out of Berkeley County, and he's the Chair of the IMSAC, Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, West Virginia Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. He, he'd be good, because he actually called me on it for some, in some, through some means, he received word, we're, we're doing training in Hardy County, and he called me about that, just wanted to make sure that we had all our, all of our ducks in a row, and he's willing to come and, and talk to us more. And I wanted her, if possible, to reach out to him, just, just because it would be, you know, it would be another source of information for us.
I'll follow up with Fran, because it may, maybe our next board meeting might be the perfect, perfect place to bring him in.
It could be.
Yeah, they do send out lists of when they got training and where those trains are.
Okay, okay. And.
Okay.
Thank you, Peggy, thank you. And Roger, we'll go ahead and do this request, this special funding request, because this is a special funding request for HCEAA, and this is to finish off the year for $60,000. and this is to finish off the year, um, for sixty thousand.
And that'll get you back on track for...
This will get us back on track. Um, we, we are needing, because of the way, um, the request happened this year, it put us a month ahead. So basically, for this month, and where it's in the, in the year correctly, this has to be a special funding request. Yeah.
The, uh, I've been signaled that somebody's trying to call in on the phone, and apparently it didn't get hooked up.
So... But we will, um...
And then next fiscal year's already, um, I think what I said...
It will be automatic, then.
So six, sixty thousand is going to be the figure that's going to bring us up to where we're going to start July one.
Fresh.
Pretty and clear with all of the...
With the budgeted funding from there on in.
Budgeted funding, okay.
Uh, we can entertain a motion.
You do it while you're doing that?
I'll second this multitask.
They can call, they, we don't have a schedule. We can't do it, because there's no scheduled call for this time. So motion is properly moved and seconded? Uh, any further discussion? Hearing them see the vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so that motion is passed for that special funding, sixty thousand for HCEAA. Thanks so much, Roger.
All right.
Um, they can call.
Thank you.
Oh, it says that it's not a scheduled call.
I'm sorry, that conference call is not scheduled for this time.
We'll have to check that out.
It's done that a few times.
Yeah, so, yeah, last time it was okay, and we did have a scheduled call. Now it says it's, so what, for whatever reason. All right, next up on the agenda, Mr. Bill Owers, Hardy County Health Department.
Bill Owers, Hardy County Health Department. I do not have a whole lot. We do have our open house scheduled for June thirteenth from one to three. Thanks from, to Ms. Wendy for putting a lot of effort into that. We'll invite you, Hannah, you're invited. You can come. Friday thirteenth. One to three. Yeah. That's fine. We, we just, we had to pick a day, and that was the one we, we could come up with. Health department-wise, we're doing well. We're going to, we have scheduled a prostate clinic for the men, again. I can't tell you the dates off the top of my head. Um, in the process of trying to hire a sanitary, um... That didn't go too well the first round, so we're, I'm on the second round. Helen retired on me, and Heidi moved over to take Helen's job in the finance department, so, um... Dog bites, I don't even want to go there, but maybe we can team up. We, we need to, to team up and do some kind, education, promotion. It, Wendy could even tell you, they're calling here. It's, people's wanting to sue, um, people don't understand. It's keeping the sheriff's department busy, it's keeping nine-one-one busy, and it's hammering me.
It was on the news, uh, or, uh, Facebook, and I don't think it was on the news, that, uh, some county somewhere illegal even have a, a government.
You know what's crazy? My, my phone call I got, my daughter and them's at the beach, and my son-in-law just went for a run. He got attacked by a pit bull.
And it just first came?
Just, yeah.
In looking at Paul's report, and I saw that, as I glanced quickly through it, it looks like there's about fifteen animal attack calls for last month.
It's crazy, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, and some of them are, I'm just going to say, some of them are asinine. Um, some of them's an owner trying to break up two of their own dogs, so on and so forth. But in my world, it doesn't matter, because it takes the same time to investigate one of them as it does one that could potentially have rabies. Takes the same amount, but we've got, you're talking about stepping up our game. We've got to work together and step up our game, because what we're doing is not working.
Well, part of the problem too is, if a dog bites somebody, then the people don't have the records or can't find where they've had the dog vaccinated.
But see, that, that, there's one of my points. Why are we not issuing tickets on every case that that happens? Every case of an animal bite, and if they can't find rabies records, cause unless I'm wrong, every dog in Hardy County's supposed to be registered and have a rabies vaccination. We ought to be fining these people.
The chip, what's a chip? The chip policy, that expensive, isn't it? And then chips in the dog?
No, but you gotta, I mean, it, it's not that expensive.
What I was saying was, make a recommendation, if you're going to have it vaccinated, to have it chipped. Then, and when, then if somebody wanted to check it, you could check it real quick with the, the, the code reader to see whether or not it was up the snuff.
Right. I, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying.
Make them a recommendation, and you can't force them to do it, but you...
But most of them, Commissioner Fensler's not going to be the issues to, because the, the dogs we deal with have never seen a vet. And never, never see even free vaccination clinics.
No, sorry about this. Okay, will you walk me through how that, the process for the issuing the tickets would work?
Well, and the, here, here's the thing.
Right.
If, if you have a dog, uh, we have dogs, okay? When you pay your taxes, you're supposed to be assessed to pay taxes on the dog.
Yes.
All right? And you're supposed to show that the dog has rabies vaccination, okay? So if Bill's dog bites Mr. Vakowski, when that sheriff comes, if I can't prove that my dog has, number one, the taxes paid, and a rabies vaccination, we should be writing a ticket. And I'm not, I'm, I have fought this for years. I'm just saying, we're missing an opportunity, you know, I hear everybody coming fussing about revenue, revenue, revenue. We're missing an opportunity there for some extra revenue, that, the sheriff's got to go there anyway. I mean, JT goes and checks dogs for me all the time. So if they can't provide that it's, the taxes have been paid, and a rabies vaccination has been secured, we ought to be writing a ticket.
Okay.
And eventually words are going to get out, and people's going to get the message that, hey...
Right, right.
We're not joking in Hardy County about having the animals taken care of.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's, it's a strain on the system. I mean, but what a lot of people don't realize, um, we got a call from a supposed lawyer. County Commission got the call, I got the call, dog catcher got the call.
I got it.
Nine-one-one got the call. We got a Freedom of Information request. Somebody suing, is my guess. But if that, the only way I get notified is if Commissioner Shetrum is bitten and goes to the doctor. Then it's state law that they have to notify the health department that an animal bite occurred. So the medical professionals notify the health department. If Commissioner Shetrum gets bit and doesn't go to the doctor, I don't know anything about it. If it's not an emergency and they call nine-one-one, Paul doesn't know anything about it. And if they don't call nine-one-one, I'm guessing ninety-five percent of the time, the sheriff's department is not getting notified, so they have no records neither. Incidentally, between the four of us, none of us have any records on this case that they're after. So, I mean, I really, I can't tell you what happened.
Right.
But, um, I have been notified for Freedom of Information, where I have provided records of what I have. Um, and, you know...
Right, right.
But we, we, we got to get together on this and, and fix that issue. That's one of the biggest issues I have right now. Um, building's done, generator's up, running. I'll chime in on Committee on Aging, if you don't know, I'm president of the Committee on Aging. Francisius is supposed to be sending a building engineer in to look at our building. If that passes, then they are supposed to sign a ten-year lease with us to get the dialysis center up and running. I don't have a signed document, I have a verbal commitment for the rental of the old health department building. So it's, Committee on Aging's starting to turn itself around. Mike, Mike's doing a good job, and the board's doing a good job. We are looking for some board members. We're going to try and get Wendy to join us from the county, county side here, and we're reaching out to a bunch of people.
That's good.
So, besides that, I think I'm, I'm good.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you.
You're welcome.
For that report. All right, next up on the agenda, under Continued Business, uh, Dog Warden Contract Update. Our dog warden still needs to talk to the prosecutor, that has been finished up. We, I attended a meeting between the dog warden and the prosecutor, we talked about, about some different issues. That's within, I think that may, that meeting may have been last week, maybe, sound like last week, something.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. That meeting was two weeks ago, and they, it was just, you know, getting some fine tuning to the contract, addressing concerns. I did talk to Jim just today. I think the goal will be to have it signed by the second June meeting. So that's where that is, the dog warden contract. Um, next up on the agenda, under Continued Business, Cameras on Lost River Park Road Update.
Okay. Um, so at the last meeting, there was questions about, um, cameras on the park road. My understanding was because there was some large garbage dumping occurring. Um, the commission had indicated that previously it had been on the agenda, and they believed it had been approved for purchase of those cameras. I went back and looked at some notes and, uh, found that, yes, it had been approved, and looked back, and we did actually purchase those. Uh, when Mr. Ely was here, he did actually purchase those, and I do have those cameras. They have never been installed. They are sitting in my office right now. Uh, a big part of the issue is, um, who's going to be monitoring those cameras, and...
And those are just game cameras, right?
I looked at them a little bit, they look like game cameras, they have a card in them to remember things. I don't have the information whether or not they're cell phone compatible. That was not in with them anymore, they had been opened and that information was gone, so...
Gotcha, okay.
If they are just, um, a game camera that's going to have chips in them to re, to record activity, depending on where they are, that might be a frequent change out of those chips, or it might be infrequent.
Or the camera's not going to be there very long.
Well, exactly, or the camera may not be there.
Unless you got away to secure, a secure case or something for that camera.
Yeah.
It'll never be there long enough.
There's not a perfect solution for this, we're just, remember, remember your quote, Bill, uh, we'll never get it perfect. We'll just have to manage it. So, yeah, we, there's not, not, um, we might have some ideas though for...
Talking about, talking about the cameras for trash from Lost River?
Yeah.
If they are self-compatible, you could, you could connect that with an officer that's in that area, and as soon as something is notified on that camera, he will get a text message or notification that somebody has...
Yeah.
Promoted that camera, so he may be able to catch him even in the act.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we did, and the reason we went and put cameras there, we had, we worked through the DEP REAP program and did a cleanup there, at no cost to the county, so it was a huge, huge deal. But, you know, then you're going to have people keep coming and doing the same thing over again. We wanted to try to stop that.
I think it's just some recent activity, some...
And there has been, we got, we received pictures where someone did it already, took, uh, couches? I think couches, uh, out there. It's, it's ridiculous, you know?
No, it's not.
No, there isn't.
But I'm saying that, I mean, because they would get incitating, that there's somebody's there, if you can get the spot where, that you, you know, if they're dumping, they'll go pick up a bunch of traffic and other stuff going by, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, it would monitor it right off the bat.
Yeah. And we may be, so we need to work on monitoring the cameras and installing the cameras. Those are the two things to work on, installation and monitoring. Okay, all right, yeah.
Tell you though, for one person that, most of them travels every day to work.
Yeah.
It would be good to kind of help monitor them, and I'm sure everybody would.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It may be too, that some of the people in the county that pays a trash bill doesn't know that they, in our code, will pick up large items on certain days, if they call them ahead of time.
Right, right.
Well, that's learned the hard way.
Okay, thank you for that, Loretta. Next up on the agenda, under Continued Business, we will go to McCoy Theater Previous Funding Request. I think we have Eric here.
Yep.
Um, so you, you want to, I don't know if we so much need an update from Eric, I don't, unless you want to say something, Eric?
No, I mean, if you have any questions, I'm here.
So the funding so far, and that was because of what we had, um, from our opioid funding at the time, is eight thousand, eight thousand and something, and you received that check?
Yeah, yeah, we did.
And so at the, at the time, we didn't have our opioid, we hadn't received our, our next opioid funding, so we couldn't do a vote at that time. Or, or as we saw it, at least, we couldn't do a vote on the continued funding. I think the request, the total request is twenty or twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
The total request was for twenty-five thousand. I do have that in my notes from when, um, they, the McCoys came for, for two consecutive meetings, I believe. I did go back and watch those meetings. So they were requesting twenty-five thousand. Um, we, we fairly recently have gotten an update on what we have available, what we have left available. I think, I do think that the, um, what was said during the meeting, uh, was that the intention of the commission was to fully fund that request once we receive it. I do think that that is the case. Uh, but we would need to formally vote on that if we're going to do it.
So what, we're talking seventeen dollars between twenty-five and eight, well, about seventeen?
So take a recent twenty-five?
Yes.
Seventeen dollars. You final that?
Aye.
All right, I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded to ref, uh, to fund that balance from the twenty-five thousand to what has been paid already. Any further discussion?
Saying you just clarification that's coming out of the opioid funding?
Yeah, yeah, and that is to come out of the opioid funding. Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing them will proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion does pass. Next up on the agenda, and we are excited about, I'm very happy to hear that you guys did receive the grant, and the lighting, the light, that's, that's going forward.
It's all moving forward, yeah, we're doing good.
And we have, uh, programming for every month during this year?
Yep, every month, along, which is great. In October, we're going to do this big Fall Fest Open House, where we're going to have a stage outside as well as inside, and have, we have twelve different bands lined up, and, uh, we're going to do a whole craft fair out on the plaza and everything, so it's really going to...
That's great.
Yeah.
That's really great.
We got a Christmas show too, so that's good, so...
It is.
Yeah, we're moving ahead, started serving beer and wine at certain performances, so, yeah. Moving in a good direction.
That, it is a very good direction, and, um, great work, great work by you guys.
So, thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda, under Continued Business, we have the Valley View Golf Course Funding Request. Mr. Workman is...
I'm taking that all in. I would be more than happy. Several months ago, uh, Valley View came to us with a, a huge need. And, uh, like I say, obviously there was, there is not enough money in the county coffers to cover the, uh, the needs for the golf course. But the golf course has continued to, again, be a, a, a gem in our community, that draws, uh, folks to come. And, uh, more recently, uh, I've had conversations with, uh, Mike Mathias, and Don Baker, and Bill Owers, and, uh, a few others in passing, uh, regarding the continuing and ongoing needs. And, uh, as we come to the end of the year, uh, like I say, uh, Loretta, we still had about forty thousand in, uh, an unencumbered account that, uh, and, and I, I feel like that probably is still there, and since we're using the opioid funds to cover the rest of the, um, McCoy Theater, uh, needs that, that we had, had committed or pledged, uh, support of. It's one of those things that's out there, I don't play, I haven't played golf for years, but I do know people that play golf, and I do know folks come to the community. There's a new restaurant there.
I can give, you, you want me to jump in?
Yeah, there's a new... Yeah, there's a new restaurant there that.
As one of my thousand duties these days, I am secretary of Valley View. Couple things the general community may not know, Valley View Golf Course is some organization's biggest fundraisers. They have golf tournaments on the weekend.
Question. Who actually owns it?
Who actually owns it? It is actually owned by the members.
Okay.
Okay?
Not the co-op.
Yeah. The problem, I won't say it's a problem. You have more, when we come to membership, members get old, members quit playing, members pass away. There's, were more members passing away than there were new golfers coming. But Valley View also lets Petersburg, East Hardy, Moorefield, Hampshire, hold their court, their, their matches there. The cost is crazy for chemicals just to maintain the golf course. And Roger will tell you, because Roger's attended several meetings, Valley View is one catastrophe away from being done. Water system goes, so on and so forth. I've been on the board about six years and the only year we even turned a little bit of profit was a COVID year and that was thanks to the Hardy County Commission and the Grant County Commission and town of Moorefield and town of Petersburg contributing some money to the golf course. We're doing, we're hanging right now, but again, we're one catastrophe away from being, it's a struggle. It's a struggle to keep things going.
So there's nothing, there's no balance sheet, there's no buffer really?
Not enough.
No, they, they, they're already pretty in debt, actually.
I mean, we're, we've gained some ground, but we're having, we, we still could use, because they, you go, just ride by on the weekend and look, it's packed and a lot of them people come from out of town because we have finally got the condition of the golf course to where it's one of the top ten in the state.
Okay, okay. No, right.
Now, there's just one clarification I want to get straight away. And I finally understood it after me, I think you and I have talked about this. There's a little confusion about kids and when they pay and when they don't.
Right.
There is a time when they have to pay.
Yes, so.
Out of season.
Out, out of season, they do not pay, the athletic associations pick up, they pay a hundred dollars a kid or whatever. They can play all they want during golf season, their matches, everything's free. Out of season, then they, they, we have a junior membership that they have to pay. We do have ways. If, let's just say a kid's on a golf team and the season ends, we have some generous members. If that kid's family could not afford a hundred dollar membership for them to play the rest of the year, if they bring that to our attention, we take care of it.
Love the sport you need to play about.
Right.
All you can.
Absolutely. So yes.
I just wanted to get that clarification out there because it was confusing there for a while. They do pay and they don't pay, you know, when, or whatever, but that's, that's.
It's good you have that clear. I wanted to ask you an additional question related to that. The one issue that I had, I had a few things related to this and it was, none of them had, had to do with not wanting to fund the golf course because it is an important thing and, and I wanted to see it funded. You know, we have on this very agenda today, a request for funds policy. It was in my opinion that we should wait and we, we should do that because that creates an orderly process for people applying, you know, people applying for funding. And the second thing, you know, we did ask when the initial presentation came to try to find what this number was. And I have a range of numbers, but I still don't have an exact number. That always would, would worry me, like, I think it's.
I think there's an exact number in your letter.
Is there an exact number in the letter?
There were numbers in the letter. The one, the ones that I recall are the cost estimates for the new tractor.
When did you say in the letter?
I, I, I thought the letter said fifteen thousand dollars, but.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, we're fine. Here, here's the reason there was not a number in the letter. I sit in these meetings and I hear everybody come and ask you guys for money, okay? Everybody asks for money. We are in that line asking for money and we'll take anything that's available. That's why we did not put a number or didn't want to put a number in the letter. If it's five hundred dollars, we'll take it. If it's five thousand dollars, we'll take it. We're, we're just, but I want to tell you this too. We just bought some new equipment, but our members do step up. So some, some of our members are more financially stable than others and they contributed, they actually did a drive of a thousand dollars a person to help pay for some of that equipment and Burke and Herbert stepped up in the community and helped us out with a community grant to be able to purchase that equipment to get our golf course and the top, he'll tell you, we're using stuff that the parking wreck wouldn't even take if we were giving it away.
One other thing I'll point out, talk about the condition. For, my first cousin's a golf pro and was familiar with some of the golf courses that he managed. They generally had between twelve and eighteen people working at the golf course to ground, maintain the grounds. Down here, there's a superintendent that's full time and one guy that cuts grass that's almost full time and a, and a third part-time that they hire in the summer and that's it. It amazes me that they can maintain that golf course.
Because we, we just don't have the finances to, to do it.
Okay, well, no, this, if it's fifteen, if it is fifteen, is there a, what goal will this be put toward? Like, so would it be for hiring someone?
Probably not. I mean, probably, probably will be to help pay.
It's a board that will make the decision.
It's a board that'll make the decision, but I mean, there's a whole list. Like you says, there's a, you know, we.
Yeah, right, I understand.
Just running, just running the electric for the pump to pump water out of the river, so on and so forth, is thousands of dollars a month. That's not counting the, the chemicals that you have to put on the greens, the fertilizer, the topsoil, the top dressing. It's, I didn't even know, I played golf until I got on the board, I had no idea what it takes to run a golf course.
Bill, did they get enough money donated to cover that new mower? Or are they still short on that?
They're still short a little bit.
You could apply it to that. You could specifically say it's for the new greens or.
Mower or tractor.
That's pretty, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Because then it would be.
And we have a receipt.
And we would have a receipt, because we are required to have that.
Okay.
And that's the reason I asked the question.
I think, I think that that's, that, that clarifies things, which is very good. Like I say, as President Chief mentioned, we do have on the agenda a little bit later, the NGO funding request policy that I suspect passed and will chart. And looking ahead, the next year's budget, we are going to be fairly tight. So as we go out of this fiscal year and we still have a few dollars that we can put to good causes, I think this is a cause that is deserving. And so I would make the motion that we support Valley View Golf Association, any amount of fifteen thousand dollars to be used for their equipment purchase.
Beautiful, thank you.
I'll second that if I can amend it just a little bit. We're in the process of doing this funding request policy with application. If that passes so far today too, I would like to see, at least fill out the application.
Absolutely, 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 absolutely.
And provide the documents.
Absolutely.
If that's a motion for the amendment, I'll second it. Okay.
Okay, motion's been properly moved and seconded for amending the original motion. The amendment is that with the fifteen thousand dollar funding, that the golf course will fill out this request for funds policy.
Absolutely.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we proceed to vote on that amendment. All those in favor, please say if I've seen, aye?
Aye.
Aye? That motion does pass for the amendment. Now we'll go back to the original motion. It's been moved and it needs to be seconded. You second it. Motion's been properly moved and seconded for funding fifteen thousand to the Valley View Golf Course. Any further discussion? Hearing now, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say if I've seen, aye?
Aye.
Aye? No opposition, so that motion does pass.
While I'm in the hot seat, can I go back to the Health Department for a minute?
Sure.
I need to get on an agenda. My Board of Health passed a regulation. Now, probably now is not the time, but you guys, new state law, I'm still getting used to. You guys have to pass it or deny it or not do anything. So I would like to get that on.
Coming agenda for the July, for June meeting? Or July, the first meeting in July? You like the morning meetings?
I like the July meeting.
July first, we can have that on the agenda for the July first.
And it's basically, it's a, it's a records policy.
Okay, yeah. No, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, 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 absolutely.
And now we'll let you go to the Health Department.
Yeah, now I can go to the Health Department. Thanks, guys.
No, thank you, Bill, thank you.
Yeah.
No, I need to go, seriously.
If I don't forget, I'll be over.
Okay, if you do, just let me know. I'm over there every other day, it seems like. All right, we're moving, moving along really well today. Next up, under new business, we have Briar Parker here from East Hardy and we are going to present you with something. So the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia has a competition each year for eighth graders and it's a writing project. Last year's project was what does my county commission do for me? This year's project was a day in the life of a county commissioner. And Ms. Brown from East Hardy always walks her classes through these things, you know, talks to them about, about government, what government does for them, what the county commission does for them and the county commission's role. And so her students wrote these papers and submitted them and Briar won second place in the entire state for his paper, which is a huge deal. It's, and with that, he also won three hundred dollars, which we have a check here for you today, right? He's ready to come. Good job getting right up here when you saw that check.
Now who taught him that?
All right, um, we probably need to get this.
Yep, who's that chair out of the way?
Congratulations.
All right, this, this is your check. That comes from the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia, three hundred dollars, all right? And then this is your, this is your second place. That's your, that's your. Let's turn that around and you're going to take a picture of it.
Okay, I'm going to get out of the way so you all can get closer.
And that will also be posted.
Briar, very proud of you. Great job. Okay, great job. You're getting more in front, okay?
It'll also be, it'll also be. And I'll get a copy and I'll run it.
Yes.
I just want to add that Briar was thinking about spending it on fishing gear, but now he's thinking about spending it on golf gear to join the golf.
Oh, wow.
He's excited to hear that you signed in the golf course.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Should we get a picture of all of them?
If they would be willing to do it, we should do it.
If, if the, if you would like to and.
Yeah.
No, you're a teacher.
Yeah. Ms. Brown, we would love to get a picture with you.
I think I'll take a picture if you want to get in there. You get in there too. You get in there too. Get out there, Pat. Here, give me your phone and I'll take it.
Great job.
How about that?
Day down.
Oh, okay, I'll.
There you go.
Get him in there. Get in there.
Are the other guys going in? You all going in or just Steven?
I'll just begin on this one, then I'll get out of here in just a minute so we can just get there, okay?
Okay. All right, my turn. Perfect.
Let, let them get a picture just with you guys.
Move over.
Get into, get in between the flags. We're very proud of you.
Yes, we're really proud of you. That's a great job, a great job. All right, next up on the agenda would be an in-house budget revision consideration for Kelly Shaki.
Ms. Shaki's actually in grand jury this morning.
She's in grand.
So we'll move that to the next meeting.
Well, I sent her a message because she said that she could, yesterday, that she could get away. I haven't heard anything yet, so we might be able to work her in as soon as she gets it.
Okay, if she's able to come at some point, yeah, no problem.
So she's been notified, just waiting for her.
Work her in.
Yep.
If she comes, we'll work her in. Okay. Next, we have determination or continuation of the second regularly scheduled meeting for the remainder of the calendar year. So we'll plan to vote on this today. So what that is all about is at the beginning of the year, we voted to have a second meeting each month and we do that on the third Tuesday at 5:00 PM. We did that because we want people to know we're as transparent as we can possibly be, which we, we really are. And we wanted to have, we wanted to be more accessible in terms, you know, if someone works, probably they can make a 5:00 PM meeting maybe if they can't make a non-AM one and we wanted to, we wanted to be available for that. We've had now five of those, five of those second meeting of the month meetings. We're, I think we probably have mixed feelings on it. The first feeling I would have is, this is just for me personally, I think people do appreciate it and they like the idea at least. They at least like the idea that the county commission is meeting in the evenings and if they wanted to come, if they wanted to come, they could. They like that idea. Now, something, something that is important, we, we do, we do our meetings live now, so I think just by that, you're more accessible to people, so that's already happening. And that's why I kind of have mixed feelings on it. I, I, I'm not in favor, you would be amazed if you saw the number of meetings county commissioners attend. It is, it's, it's a lot of meetings that we attend and I don't, they're, we don't want to have meetings just to have meetings. I can tell you that. And if we can accomplish everything in one monthly meeting, I'm not in favor of having a second one, just to have a second meeting. But if it is, if it is, if, if, if the weight is more on the side that it's, it's very, very important to people, I'm very willing to do it too. I just, that, that, those are my feelings on it. Sort of a mixed bag. I was hoping we would end this time and I would be, you know, one hundred percent on this side that we want to continue it, if we were to continue it, but I think it's a mixed bag. I think some people from the county, at least from, from what they're telling us, are happy. They think they can, they think they can get more done or have us.
How's the attendance?
Well, you know what? We had a, we had a number that was supposed to be reached at the last meeting and it wasn't. So at the beginning of that meeting, I said, I said, well, well, there was, there's some technical parts to this, I guess. So what we said is, is that ten people come to this last evening meeting, we'll continue to have. Or that wasn't, we just said that just to see what, what happened.
That wasn't paid.
Yeah, we did put a stipulation on it. That can't be paid by, you know, government and, and be here. And we did have over ten, but too many of them are paid, you know, those are the people. For example, Paul was here at the meeting, but he's paid, so we can't count him.
And we had teachers here at the meeting.
And we had teachers, they're paid, yeah. So that's why it's kind of a mixed bag for us. So I would say, I would say it's not, you know, some people that talk about it, it's, it's not as well attended as it should be. If people truly want to be engaged, you know, you have to be engaged and some things, some things in county government, in fact, most things aren't exciting and controversial. You just have to do the daily work of government. They're not, you know, they're not exciting every day. You just have to do the work. You just have to do the work.
I've got a suggestion.
Yeah.
Suspend it through the summer and have one in September and take it back.
We could do that. I like that. I like that idea. Loretta doesn't like it.
That's just the next thing to have, a special meeting whenever you need it.
And we all, that's another part. We actually, we probably have always had a second meeting each month. It was just called a special meeting. So it's, it's, we weren't meeting already two times.
But that's, that's fair to suspend it in the summer. A lot of people.
It is fair. That's true. That's a great.
And that way you'll, you'll have feedback by September.
If people are up in arms, we're not.
So I will say, as the county, from the county offices, not just my office, as the county clerk, but the assessor's office and some of the other offices, we appreciate the second meeting because it does allow us to have business flow more smoothly and quickly through the offices. Special meetings don't allow this regular business on them for the most part. It's just whatever special thing you have to do. Um, so from the county offices' point of view, we like the second meetings. Um, especially if you're gonna do exonerations or you're holding citizens' money and they can't get it for a month because you haven't had a meeting to approve it.
Yeah, right, right. Um, what, what do you think about the suspending it?
I, I think that's a, that's a reasonable expectation because the summertime is probably folks.
In the month of June, we're, we're just.
It's incredibly busy. July, July is the same. Yeah, we're, yeah.
A week worth of meetings, one of them.
One hundred percent, there is, yeah. Um, we will entertain a motion. Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and, and, uh, suspend the second meeting of the month, uh, and revisit the question in September.
Okay, all right, second. Motion's been properly moved and seconded for suspending the second regular monthly meeting for now and revisiting that in September. Any further discussion? Hearing no one proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All were in favor, so that motion does pass. All right, we have Ms. Kelly Shaki here, so we'll come back to her. We have an in-house budget revision consideration.
Yeah, you do. You didn't need to move me. I could come down.
Okay, thank you, thank, okay, this is it, we're here.
Yes. I just had two categories that they need moved in. I went over like ninety-nine dollars in training and education 'cause we had an additional training this year, so that added more to it. And then I'm gonna move some for the supplies, so I can order extra toner cartridges and stuff for the live skin machine. Live skin machine is up and running, has been used, and next week it'll definitely get a big workout from today's grand jury.
Yeah.
We have forty, yeah, we're presenting forty this morning. Yeah, so.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, um, in-house budget revision.
Second. Motion's been properly moved and seconded for approval of the in-house budget revision for the circuit clerk's office. Any further discussion? Hearing no one proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion does pass. Kelly, do you need this back?
No, I do not. Yep, that's it.
Hey, thank you very much. Thanks for coming down and good luck today.
Can you come see me very busy?
Do you want me to sign your signature on this?
Or tell me and I can come downstairs.
Oh, yeah, county commission president.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm in the office. And then I'll.
Thank you for setting Mr. Aline. I got you.
And I'll take it in.
I said, I was gonna make the statement that our new prosecutor is very busy.
Oh, yeah, no, he's, he's, he's knocking it out of the park. Yeah, yeah. All right, next up on the agenda, under new business, will be the non-governmental NGO funding request policy. And we do have, and of course, we all worked on this policy, um, 'cause we sent it back and we made edits. You know, if there were any that were, were.
What was the final amount that we, we had come to consensus on?
Uh, twenty-five hundred.
Okay. Do you think that's enough, or should it be four thousand? I know we've.
Well, it also says the commission reserves the right to allow exceptions when.
Yes, we have the reservation for exceptions.
Yeah, it does say that. The only, there are two things that we want to look at. We had that the considerations for this, the considerations will be done on the first Tuesday of March, June, September, and December. And we wanna make sure that we're, we're happy with those dates.
Highlighted in there, stressed really hard about receipts, because that's one thing we hardly ever get back.
Does talk about the financial, uh, documents, or at least the, some of the financial.
All our, uh, Oproy money and all that, we've asked for.
Okay, here, here this is, Commissioner Fensel. Any group, organization, or end, entity which receives a contribution and/or funding from the Hardy County Commission must file at the end of the state's fiscal year a report of all disbursements of the funds, along with supporting documents containing receipts, proof of payment, and pictures. So it does have that, yeah. Um, but no, excellent questions there. Um, so one thing to consider is the months, and then the second thing is.
The language regarding this fiscal year, if we wanna leave it that way to have to review it every year? Or do we want to eliminate the fiscal year language and just?
This is just a continuing policy then.
Yes, make the continuing policy herefore.
And for me, I would say it made a continuing.
I would say you do that, and then if, so you need to change.
What were the months again? Um, they are March, June, September, and December. Um, and I, I mean, we can, if we only wanted to do it twice a year or once, you know, we could, we could change this in any way, really, that we want to.
Trying to think that. Like saying, and our clerk may have a little better idea when have a lot of these requests come, and know some of them come toward the end of school.
They come throughout the entire year, but there is, um, seems to be more in the spring.
There does seem to be more in the spring.
If you're thinking about the, the kids, um, I think March is a good time. That's also our budget time. So that gives us an eye, you know, an idea of who's looking for funds.
Yeah.
March, June, September, December.
I don't see a problem with that, 'cause we can put it on the agenda whenever.
That's true.
Matches up with.
No, it wouldn't hurt it, and we have the March, which is the, that's the busy time.
I, I don't think, I, I think it should be more frequent than two times a year.
Yeah, I like what you're saying.
Four times a year, I think in the, in the inaugural, uh, year of this policy, I think that's good, uh, four times.
Okay, yeah, okay. And then we'll do it, we'll take those fiscal years out as well. Uh, anything else?
I didn't see anything else. See, my only other question was, did, did we wanna do something with the amount? But I think that sentence, it was, for those words that were added afterward at indiscretion of the county commission, pretty much take care of that. But I think that's, that's a reasonable number to go with.
Yeah, I do too. I do too. You good with it?
Yeah, with the changes that we've discussed.
Okay, I'll make the motion with the changes that we discussed, except that like.
I'll second that.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded for approval of the request for funds, for funds policy, with changes being that, uh, we take the fiscal year out and make this an ongoing policy.
We done, what the norm we just approved for billing, that's way over.
Yeah, but we, it's still within the policy.
We have that in our cover.
We have it in our cover, yes, we did, we did, we did.
We have it.
Right, right, right. Any further discussion? Hearing no one proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 So that motion does pass and that policy is approved. You need all our signatures today on this?
Yes.
Put all our signatures today. All right. Or does this have to be amended? Oh, yeah, we have to amend that for, that's right, that's right, sorry, yep. Uh, we'll just send that down to her, uh, and, yeah, we'll, once we get it amended, we're sorry about that. That's good, that's right. Um, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and get this report. The May farmland preservation amount is fifteen thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and forty cents. Uh, we don't have the jail bill listed, right? Do we have that jail bill? It's on the original one. Oh, yeah. Uh, the jail bill for the month of April is twenty-six thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and ninety cents, uh, which we're, we're doing really an excellent job with our jail bill. Now, something to keep in mind, uh, the jail bill for this, this upcoming year is going to increase from the fifty-four dollar per diem rate, and that's fifty-four and some odd cents, to sixty-seven per diem baseline. With, with no additional funding whatsoever, that increase was just done by legislative action, and that's gonna be the increase that we're gonna have to pay. So that takes that up by a significant amount each month, um.
So that figured, though, bird what I have seen it, it, it hit down there eighty thousand a month.
Oh, right, right, right.
You know, twenty-six, that's a long ways from eighty.
Long way. We're, we're doing an excellent job with the jail bill and.
Well, that, that, well, you're gonna give the report, you know, I'm sure the home, home, that stuff, really. I think, I think all of that made a big change.
It, it's making a big difference, and, and it's not just that we're twenty-six for this month, but you notice it's stable, it's stable, always there, so. And people are doing work to keep that, to make that be the case, so, um, yeah. All right, next up on the agenda is one to be Wendy Branson, county coordinator, for her monthly report.
I also have the sheriff's report.
Yeah, oh, okay, that's good.
If you would like for me to, I'll start with that first and get that out of the way since he is in court. As I mentioned, um, Sheriff Dawson, he is in court along with his chief deputy, Miller, and Lieutenant Short to present this report to the county commission, so he asked me if I would do that on his behalf. They, the sheriff's department is presenting twenty-one felony cases to date. Um, prosecuting attorney Ryan, prosecuting attorney Ryan is in, is indicting forty people this date for various felony offenses. The sheriff's department is coming into the last month of the fiscal year, ten percent under budget. Um, Captain Miller is, actually, chief deputy Miller, I guess I should say, is completing the build of our newest cr, newest cruiser. And the task force had the following activities for the month of May. Um, four controlled buys of methamphetamine, five gun sees assisting U.S. probation in felony possession of a firearm, federal sentencing, sentencing for a gentleman, um, Crane Curtis for two and a half years, and federal sentencing Danielle Guy Colino, um, twelve point five years. So. And to my report, um, this is, um, from Jim. Um, Jim reported that he picked up eight dogs in the month of May. Um, six were reclaimed by their owners and one was successfully rehomed. So we actually have fourteen dogs at the pound now. I know that he's been called several times in the last couple of days. I've been talking to him more frequently about people calling and saying that they've seen a dog and he would go over and look for a dog and couldn't find it, you know, other things. So he is working diligently on answering those calls and investigating to see where those animals are at. Um, facility improvements, um, Jeremy Shingleton, um, Shingleton Contracting, um, has completed the excavation of the footers for the planned building addition. Um, the progress unfortunately has been unpacked by our unfavorable weather conditions. Um, I did get an update from Melvin this morning from Jeremy, and he's hoping that next week he can start out there to, um, getting everything, I guess I'm sure to get everything dried out, so he thinks next week he'll be out there. So hopefully weather will be in our favor and he can continue to work on that. Um, this was actually tabled, this next topic was tabled from the previous meeting about the security cameras at the pound. Um, I did speak with Tommy about his proposal for his hard-wired cameras. Um, one of the questions was, um, how much storage that he had, that how much his storage, his cameras would hold. And his cameras are a four terabyte storage, in which that is built into the system. Um, and it would allow two to four weeks of footage, depending on how many times the cameras would have to record. Um, he could expand it if we needed him to, to an eight to ten terabyte, and that would increase the estimate that he provided with, uh, provided to us, um, between three hundred and three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, just asking Tommy what his opinion is, he told me that he didn't think that we actually needed the additional space just for what we're doing, because basically, um, what we had talked about was we're monitoring just to make sure people going in and out of the pound, not necessarily, um, the dogs inside the pound, but we did want to put a camera possibly, or have a camera within the inside just to make sure that nobody would try to enter that without, um, not having permission to be out there. Um, there is a thirty-day storage. Um, it is included with no additional cost. Um, there is a motion notification available, um, and it could actually be designated to a phone and/or a computer, um, whichever you, we wanna do that. Um, he would just have to set that up on, whether it be a phone or, um, the computer or both. Two cameras can be motion triggered. Um, he can actually make them all motion triggered if we wanted, so. But we would just have to let him know what we wanted, um, what we wanted him to be. One of the cameras to motion record. We did, I did speak, excuse me, I did, um, look into the Arlo cameras because that was also another recommendation. The Arlo cameras, um, for four of the Arlo XL second gen, um, they are wireless camera. Um, they're three hundred dollars. There is a subscription required. Um, it's seven ninety-nine per camera, um, per month, or seventeen ninety-nine for unlimited cameras. Um, the cloud storage is sixty days, and those cameras require battery charging and purchase of spare batteries, where Tommy's does not. Tommy's would be hardwired. Um, one of the other questions was, excuse me, Hardy Telecommunications, we don't have internet out there. I did speak to, um, did speak to them, and Hardy Telecommunication has offered to, um, install internet at no cost in exchange for a two-year service agreement. Um, the base plan that we could get is a two hundred and fifty, um, megabyte, um, internet-only plan, and this will be beginning on June the eleventh, and it's a hundred and ten dollars a month. Um, they were actually, um, Hardy's plans previously, you had to have a phone service and the internet, but as of June the eleventh, um, they will be rolling out a new package apparently, just for internet only. Um, and I feel that honestly, the two fifty, um, that, just by looking at different speeds and doing a little bit of research, for no more than what they're, we're gonna be wanting to use out there, I think that would be sufficient to go with that. Um, so I did say that, um, the, the pending decisions would be the, the final selection of the camera system and identification of who are, who would be getting the alerts, whether it be on the computer or by phone or by both.
There's no ongoing costs with, uh, the, uh, McCosley.
There is not, no. Um, his bill, um, I attached that to your, your R's report from the last time. Um, just to go over that, his bill was for twenty-seven hundred dollars, and that is getting us, um, an N V R recorder, um, with four cameras, um, with a Po eight channel. Um, there's, um, a four M P cameras, cable for all six runs, labor to install cams and equipment, and hook up all the items for viewing. And what I did mention about the additional storage of the, um, if we wanted that, the three hundred to three hundred and fifty, of course, that would be added to this if we so choose to go with that higher rate of storage, which he felt that we didn't necessarily would need, that higher rate. So it looks like the twenty-seven hundred dollars. So it looks like the twenty-seven hundred dollars, what he quoted, is what the camera system would cost us.
You want the monitor out of your place?
No, really.
And honestly, I did speak to Tommy about that, because we were talking about that yesterday, because that's going to also cause more of a financial issue probably with GST, because we're going to actually have to have a computer purchased for the dog pound if we have that monitor out at the nine-one-one center. Where, if we would go with Tommy's, um, or like I said, the Arlos. Um, I'm not opposing, I mean, I'm not referring either one of them, but if, from my understanding with GST, if we have to have a computer at the dog pound, we run that risk of dirt, water, you know? I know that Jim is not going to want to fool with that.
No.
Um, and, you know, in all honesty, we wouldn't necessarily, I don't think it would be, just my opinion, um, pressing that we would have a monitor at the nine-one-one system, nine-one-one center, excuse me. Um, it would only be a case-by-case if we, you know, somebody went down there and tore something up, or we had property damage, or someone said they fell, or something far worse. Um, then we can look at whoever's monitor, or whoever's computer, this is going to be installed or whatever. Um, then we can look at, look at that case-by-case, because I don't necessarily feel that we need just to have a computer monitor at the nine-one-one center, just to monitor, you know? That's just my opinion.
It was a way, it was a way to possibly do it, if we were talking about twenty-four-seven monitoring, but it's not, like, completely necessary.
I don't know how they did the cameras in town. Of course, their bandwidth wasn't that great, but they didn't have a computer, but something, Hardy Telecom evidently sent this out there to us in the past. But it did come through one of our computers, watching the screen, but I don't know how they set that up.
Um, you said, you know, it is, it seems that all the information's here now. Uh, very important thing was the internet access, no matter which way we went. But, you know, we can, we can make the decision or, or think about it some more until.
I mean, it's, don't worry, you don't have to have a separate computer, or just hook it to someone else's computer. It's like, I'm giving you just an example.
Yours.
Do, or do you need a separate computer?
I do not need a separate computer.
See, the one I was thinking, since you're heavily involved with it, if you had it hooked to your computer and Jim had a phone where he can get notices, then it's, when you had an issue, then you could just go back to your computer.
Yeah, that's fine.
And look at it, rather than.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been around when you, you've got that one at your home, and I mean, that thing just every little bit, it's a popping up.
Oh, yeah, um.
You know, over this little, what you think is little things sometime, but it'll catch the big one too.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, all it needs is to hook it to somebody so you can go back and look. And like I said, you, you're really on top of the thing, not as much as anybody is anyway. Is that a fuel for thought? Do you want it?
I'll take it. I don't mind, I mean, honestly, I mean, I think it would, I'm agreeing with, with Jay with this. I think that Jim and I work, you know, well together, and if there's a situation or problem, I'm usually the one that he calls first, so I, I don't have a problem with that.
Tommy, um, give the estimate, is it for four cameras?
It is for four cameras. It is the, um, four MP cameras is what the estimate or the quote, do you, can you see that?
Yeah, I did see it, yeah, yeah, I did.
And that's, of course, labor, that's the recorder, that's the, everything that would need to install. The only thing that he does need, it would, of course, would be the internet to hook to, to.
So the one-time cost would be twenty-seven hundred, and then the monthly ongoing cost would be a hundred and ten?
Yes, that is correct.
And that's compared to the two ninety-nine one-time cost with thirty-two, basically thirty-two dollars per month.
Yeah.
And we would have to buy extra batteries.
Need to buy extra batteries.
Somebody have to check them.
Somebody, yeah. The checking them, and then, uh, you know, monitoring the, well, for each of them, there's going to have to be some monitoring, you know, like the Arlo, it's on someone's phone. Whoever's it is probably wants to take the automatic notifications off and just check it at a certain time, you know, or if someone makes a call, but that's kind of, that's kind of what we're looking for.
I think it's a good idea, uh, you know, to have that, have those cameras out there.
I think it is.
Give them the, the, uh. Well, there's been the issues, especially like, when someone drops a dog. Jim can go in there at ten o'clock, and ten fifteen after he leaves, somebody dropped a dog off. Then at eleven o'clock, somebody drives in and that dog's out there, and they think it's been there for three days, there's no food, you know, and you, you can go back and really straighten them out with that.
The problem is if somebody has a dog that they put there, and it's on the outside, and somebody else comes by and messes up his dog, they get bit.
Right, you mean liability.
Yeah. Well, our insurance company, I think that our, if, if I'm, if I understood correctly, um, with our insurance, they ask if we had video monitoring out there, and I told them no, and they, you know, they really thought that we should have something, you know, just for liability's sake, I mean.
I guess it's just to the point of which system.
Which, which system, yeah.
I'm, uh, I'm not an expert on these cameras, so I'm, I'm kind of relying to see who knows more about it than me. I mean, the, the hardwire is the last mainest.
Yes, it is.
It costs a little more to begin with, but then you have the.
The only thing you may have to do is go knock, knock some cobwebs or dust off of the.
Very true.
And that, and I guess we'll have to wait till they're completed with construction before you do.
Um, well, we should wait, um, if we, if it, if at all possible, to wait till Hardy rolls out their new plan for their internet only, so we don't have to worry about paying the extra for the phone. But, um, Tommy would like to, if, if we so choose with him, um, because he understood that we were doing some work out there, um, he did request if he could get in there and to run some cabling. I think before, yeah, everything got, yeah. That would make things a little bit easier, for him anyway.
I mean, I'm, I'm leaning more towards the hardwire. Do you want a motion for that?
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to, to that, the hardwire system.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded to accept the casually estimate for the hardwire system. Any further discussion?
And I guess, oh, you hold on, what do you need to do with the Hardy?
Yeah. Most likely that what we'll do, um, is.
We've got to have that too.
Yeah, you're right.
I can let Heather know at Hardy Telecommunications, um, and then if we have to sign a contract, I don't know if we will.
That's part of the hardwire system.
Okay. That's part of, all that's included in the hardwire system. Motion. Any further discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does pass, and that funding is approved, all right?
The next item I have, which we were, we just talked about, was the home incarceration report from Rob Kerr for the month of May. Um, he told in his report, there were eight different offenders supervised. The total number of in-person, of person days supervised were two hundred and thirty days under the program supervision.
And that's important too, and I like how those person days, because that kind of gives us an idea on the per diem.
Yes.
Not only that, they have to pay.
It, no, absolutely.
So you're getting paid rather than instead of paying.
Yes, yeah.
So that's a difference.
Yeah, the home incarceration is one of the main tools we have for offsetting jail bill. That's one of the main tools.
And the next item I had was, um, I applied for the Department of Energy, through the Department of Energy grant, um, for courthouse lighting. We were awarded fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars under that energy grant. That replaces the lighting, um, with energy-efficient LEDs on the first and second floors of the courthouse, excluding the circuit courtroom. Um, also, I did look, um, round four is open, um, and that is in August. Um, I can't remember the actual date.
What is your reason to exclude your circuit courtroom?
So we didn't do that first, because anticipation, they would actually have the round four of the, um, grant opening, and that is actually open now. So we're going to apply for that, as well as for lights in the courtroom, um, as well as lighting on the outside of the courthouse, because that also needs to be upgraded as well. So, um, we're getting our ducks in a row, so to speak, for the round four application, to see where else we need. But, um, and that, I'm just waiting for paperwork from the Department of Energy, um, wants to sign the contract, so I'm hoping that maybe by next month we'll have it, so we can go ahead and start working on that. And, um, just the budget reports that I included in your R's packet, and that's all I have.
Do you have a, and had someone tell me the newer dates for the sidewalk stuff?
Um, yes, the weather hindered them to do, not the day that they were scheduled. Melvin told me, and I'm thinking, it's like the middle of the month, like the sixteenth, those are what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I, I think he said two or three.
Yeah, but he said like the second week, we're going to try to get back to you.
Yeah, so, but as long as weather's permitting, but unfortunately, yeah.
Yes, huh.
So that'll be also, and then one other thing, just while I'm thinking about it, um, we'll have the courthouse facilities grant application, and I think it's September. So we might want to get our heads together and speak to Melvin about any, um, facility improvements for the courthouse.
When would that pay?
I think it's September is when we actually.
Yeah, we definitely need to be on top of that.
So the picnic, actually, I hadn't told you all this, but, um, callback day is when we typically do the annual courthouse picnic. Um, the callback day is when we're going to be gone, so we'll need to choose, they're going to, I guess, they've already worked it out amongst themselves to do their lunch or whatever. Um, they'll do a bar luncheon, is what I'm understanding. So we'll need to choose a date, um, for our annual courthouse picnic.
Okay.
So.
You might want to, that'd be a good idea to send out some dates for that.
Yeah.
Uh, is, um, is Ju-, has June nineteenth been included in our annual calendar? We, we did that.
Juneteenth, yeah.
All right, we're, we're doing better than our friends in, our friends in Mason County, because they were trying to correct that, just, just.
Yeah, we did that, like, the first year that, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure, because that came up as a question.
I'm responsible for that, you know, I will be on top of them, them extra days off.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great, right? You guys have anything else?
Uh, anything else for Wendy? That, we didn't have any budget revisions that needed to be dealt with before the end of this, um, did we?
No, we've already done our budget revision, our state budget revision.
As far as county commission, I assume.
I think we're good.
All right, good deal, thank you, very good, very good report, Wendy.
You're welcome.
All right, um, next up on the agenda, Peggy Moonlaw. Monthly report and updates on our website and the office of the Public Administration, Department of Administration Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do go to the class in July, hopefully. Paul did notify me that he received an email about the PIO class, that they may not have enough participants in it, so I may not get to take the class for a while.
You're kidding, wow, wow, okay.
Yeah, that's a little disappointing.
It is disappointing, I hope, maybe they, we'll just see, but.
First Sandy said I'll notice of all, all the region, then see if they can get some more people from that region.
Okay.
Uh, the website, worked with GST, it's been weeks that we've been working on why we couldn't get the Zoom to communicate with Facebook and go live. We finally gave up on Zoom and just went the easy way, and went to Facebook Live, and it's able to do it from here, and then I can download the video and post it other places.
Okay.
Um, that's what's up with the, uh, the videos. Now, the website, I did, uh, well, there was a comment down below. I didn't know if you all wanted to answer the comment. Uh, you want to see it? I have to, it, they want to know why, why couldn't we consider just going to one monthly meeting, be in the evening meeting?
Okay.
That was, that was the question, it was a comment question, so.
Well, it's a question in front of us. We, we, for now, uh, it's, it's, um, suspended, you know, that, that decision. I would say that will be included in the suspension of the second one, um, until September. And then, you know, we can, we can be thinking about that and, and be considering it until the September. That's what I would say, as far as the comment, yeah. But thanks for the comment, like participation.
That's right, um, also had a question. Are we going to have the second meeting this month, or are we going to away with it?
It's already set.
Okay, it's already set, so we're going to do the second meeting, okay. Um, Titus, I was waiting for him to get back to me. I didn't check my emails this morning, so maybe he did get back to me, that he was aware that we wanted to continue.
Okay.
And did I send your, send my report to you guys last night about the activity on the Facebook? You know, it's that monthly report I send you of.
I haven't looked at my email.
Okay, so I'll send it to you. I, I thought I did, but I'm not real sure. I got thinking about this morning, I wasn't for sure if I did send it or not, so I'll send you that update.
Actually, it may have said activity sheet, and I thought that was something else. Not a time sheet.
I sent you my time sheet.
But not, not an activity sheet.
All right, I'll send you that right after the meeting here. And that's basically all I have.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next up on the agenda is Clark Humberson, uh.
Yeah, so the first thing, as usual, is our exoneration settlements consolidations, orders payroll, uh, reports of our mills and estates that are opened, um, through the month of May.
Okay, we will entertain a motion for the exoneration, settlements, consolidations, orders, et cetera.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does pass.
So the next thing on, um, my agenda is the orders barring objections for ancillary without appointment estates. We have two this month that are mature. Uh, one is for the Jonathan D. Lewis estate, and the other is for Wanda Frances Brown, also known as Wanda Frances Brown. Um, these are non-resident estates, and they have chosen to go through the ancillary without appointment. We had no objections to proceeding this way as of the twenty-fifth, which was the deadline. However, yesterday we were contacted by a creditor for one of the estates, for the, and, um, of course, they were advised that the time period to object had expired, and they were given the personal representative's contact information to follow up with them, um, regarding those claims, so credit card claim.
Okay, okay, okay. And so we need to vote, vote on that order, order, when there's orders barring objection. Uh, we will entertain a motion on that now.
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does pass.
Um, the last thing on, um, my agenda today is the designation of signatories for CDs. Um, when we were reviewing, um, investing funds in some of, for some of the accounts into, um, in conspiring accounts, we realized that there were a few CDs that were not taken care of in our January meeting. Uh, we have one at, um, some, at Burkett Herbert, and two at Grant County Bank, that we did not do a designation of the new signatories. So we need to, um, do a designation of signatories for those, for, um, the sheriff and, and myself.
Okay. We entertain a motion for designating. Can we entertain a motion for designating the county clerk and the sheriff for signatories on the CDs? And it doesn't need to be commission, commission representative?
No, sir.
Has it been before?
No, sir. It has to be the treasurer and the county clerk.
Treasurer and the county clerk under the law, those are the signatories.
I'll make the motion to designate.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded for designation of those signatories for the CDs. Any further discussion? Here you now will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does pass.
Were you able to transfer or use any mine into a CD?
We have not moved any of your funds yet. We would obviously talk to you about that before we do that. But you already have several CDs, several things that are in CDs. We just need to determine and discuss how much you are comfortable with.
We'll keep following up on that. That's the second time you brought that up and it, that's, I think it's good that you're on top of that, yeah. Yeah. Anything else come for the county commission? Man, commission worked when they did it really, really fantastic today. Excellent. Ten fifteen and the gold.
Badly.
Yeah, yeah, wow, wow.
Were you entertaining a motion to?
One hundred percent. And I will second it. Motion's been properly moved and seconded for adjournment of this meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is adjourned.